Welcome, everybody, to this meeting of the South Kingstown Town Council. It is June 22, 7:30 PM. Our first order of business, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Tonight, I'm going to invite up the Boy Scouts from Troop One of Kingston to lead us in the pledge, so if guys could come up here.
(inaudible)
Would the clerk take the roll?
Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Healy.
Here.
Councilwoman Clough.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Now, next, I would like to entertain a motion to bring forward items 13A and B. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And 13A and B are recognition of a couple of the scouts who are just here leading us in the pledge, Jeremy Filiberto and Andrew Boardman, both of whom graduated to being Eagle Scouts. I think we can take these two items together. Do I hear a motion?
I want to make a motion, but I also want to add that although Nicholas Charbonneau does not live in South Kingston, he lives in Saunders Town, we did not receive a proclamation for him, but I'm sure one will be coming from your designated area. You guys did a phenomenal job. I was so proud of you yesterday. I can't thank you enough for your accomplishments. You're a shining example to your peers. You really are. You're true leaders. Keep it up.
But I would like a motion to pass.
Oh, I make a motion.
I'll second that.
13A and B, if it's A and B, 13A and B.
And if you wouldn't mind, guys, would you stand up and just tell us a little bit about the projects that you completed in order to earn those?
Just state your name, please.
I'm Nick Charbonneau. For my Eagle Scout project, I worked with Carinette Rhode Island. First of all, I want to thank you guys for inviting us to be with you today. But as I was saying, I worked with Carinette Rhode Island, and that's kind of a pregnancy outreach program that serves Rhode Island as a whole. And so, as part of my project, I organized volunteers to create 100 blankets that were distributed, polar fleece blankets, that were distributed to 100 families at risk in Rhode Island. So, that was mine.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Nick. Great job.
As Nick said, I'd like to thank you again for inviting us to come here tonight. My name is Jeremy Filiberto. For my Eagle project, I created a picnic area at the Quonset Air Museum, consisted of laying down turf and edging it in granite stones and painting a flagpole, restoring a walkway, and then we built three picnic tables, all done by scouts, and that was my project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy, if I could just tell you, my son-in-law works at Quonset, I think I told you that yesterday, and I was telling him about your project today, and he said, "I walked by that and noticed it," and he thought what a great idea it was, so he loved it at the airshow.
Hi, thank you for having us. I'm Andy Boardman, and for my project, I created a database of over 1,000 veterans that are buried in local cemeteries in South Kingstown, and I provided that information to the local VFW post 9/16. And thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Good job.
Awesome project, Andrew.
All right. Now, we have a motion. Any further comments on this? All in favor of 13A and B, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations again.
Very impressive making it to Eagle Scout. Good for you.
And that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve items four A and B.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Item five on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously as well. Item six on the agenda is licenses. License A is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Pink Pineapple LLC, 357 Main Street Wakefield, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. The application is by Stacy Hall, 26 J.H. Dwyer Drive, Middletown. Is Stacy here tonight? Please come up to the podium and say your name for the record.
Stacy Hall.
So, tell us a little bit about Pink Pineapple.
It's a women's retail clothing store. We've had one in Newport for 11 years, and we had one in Portsmouth that flooded, so we moved it over here. I've lived in South County for the summer for the last 40 years.
Great. And what are the hours of operation?
Right now, it's 10 to 6, but it's all depending on what the neighbors are doing. Some say they're opening on Sundays, some say they're not, so we're just going to go with whatever everyone in the area is doing.
I've had the opportunity to go in, and it's a fabulous shop. She has beautiful dresses, beautiful jewelry, really, really an asset to the community. It's going to be a really nice addition to that Main Street section, and I'll personally try not to come in and visit often, because that would be dangerous, but really nice shop.
Thank you so much.
Great. Any further questions? Well, good luck.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve licenses, item 6A, for the Pink Pineapple LLC, and good luck.
I second.
All right, so moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We wish you well.
Good luck.
Good luck. I'm sure I'll see you soon, even if I try not to.
All right, thank you.
That motion carried unanimously. Item 6B is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Benny &amp; Jack Incorporated, 237 Robinson Street, Wakefield, subject to approval by the Fire Chief and Communications Superintendent. Application by David Billow, 301 Mulberry Drive, Wakefield. Is David here?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. For the record, my name is David Billow. With my wife, together, we're a three-year residents of South Kingstown.
Great.
And we've decided, with our friend's dog Benny, a Yorkie, and our dog Jack, a yellow lab, we've decided to open up a pet boutique downtown. We really want to bring together the community, the pet community, and really celebrate that the pet-human bond, provide products, food, treats, accessories, et cetera.
For all types of pets, or mostly?
Dogs and cats.
Do you do grooming, shampooing, that type of thing?
No, we're not going to do that. You know, there's a few in town already, so our plan is to hopefully partner with them.
Great. Any other questions? What are your hours?
We're planning on probably about 10 to 6, 10 to 7, depending on the season and really what the community asks.
Wonderful.
Very exciting for you. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item 6B for Benny &amp; Jack on Robinson Street, located right here in Wakefield.
I second it.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Good luck.
Item 6C is a resolution granting holiday sales and miscellaneous peddler licenses to Stuart Fishman, doing business as balloons, et cetera, 15 Brandywine Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island, subject to administrative approvals, and the application is by Stuart Fishman, 15 Brandywine Drive, Westerly. How are you doing?
I'm fine, thank you. Good evening, Council. Council President, my name is Stuart Fishman, 15 Brandywine Drive, Westerly, Rhode Island. I am an novelty vendor, working in Westerly, Richmond, many cities and towns throughout Connecticut, and a couple in Massachusetts as well. I do plan on selling light-up toys for the fireworks on July 4.
Great. Is it just light-up toys, or you have balloons, I imagine?
Well, we don't do Mylar balloons anymore, but we do have those characters like Strawberry Shortcake, or Dora, Spider-Man, things like that, inflatable ones.
Is that your only venue right now here in town for July 4, or do you service other venues, or go down to the beaches, or things of that nature?
My plans are to just do 4th of July at this point. You used to have a block party. You haven't had those lately. I used to be inside that block party, actually, when Judith McMahon ran those, and I basically plan on just doing the 4th of July at this point.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve item 6C, a resolution for a peddler's license to Stuart Fishman, for the purpose of the 4th of July.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. Item seven on our agenda, under public hearings, is a public hearing to consider a proposed zoning map amendment from R-40, medium-density residential, to GI, government and institutional, for the property located at 60A St. Dominic Road and identified as Assessor's Platte 49-2, Lot 55, consisting of 13.44 acres of vacant land, as shown below. Application by the Town of South Kingstown.
Good evening. This application was prepared by the Planning Department on behalf of the town to amend the designation of the property that the Council President referenced, the former Dominic Savio Camp property, which is Platte 49-2, Lot 55. It's presently zoned R-40, which is a medium-density residential zoning district, and the proposal, as noted in the intro by the Council President, would be to amend that to GI, which is government institutional. A little history maybe would be of some value. The town purchased 160 acres from the Diocese of Providence back in, I think it was 1997, and that property accommodated Broad Rock Middle School, Senior Center, and the Broad Rock Playfields. That property was rezoned, I guess, in 1999 to GI, to reflect the municipal ownership and use. In 2010, we purchased the Savio property from the diocese, which kind of was the missing land that was sandwiched around with the other prior purchase, and we purchased that in February of 2010. Subsequently to the purchase, the town did designate this site as the future location of the South Kingstown Community Rec Facility. And as part of the 2014 South Kingstown Comprehensive Plan update, we designated this property in the future land use map in the plan itself for GI. And the future land use map really serves as like the foundational document for zoning. So essentially, this proposal to change this property to GI is reflective of what's been articulated in the state-approved and council-approved Comprehensive Community Plan from 2014. To a certain degree, it's kind of sort of like a housekeeping amendment to bring this policy in line with the Comprehensive Plan designation for the premises.
Are there questions for Vin on this? All right.
I have a communication.
Dale, could you read that into the record?
Yes, a communication dated May 13, 2015, to the Council from the Planning Board with the recommendation on the proposed zoning amendment, recommending the proposed zoning map amendment from R-40 Medium Density Residential to GI Government and Institutional, and incorporating findings of fact and findings of consistency with the purposes of zoning.
Thank you. All right. With that, are there any comments from the public on item 7A? Come up to the podium, please. State your name for the record.
Jonathan Daly-Labelle. I don't have any illusions I'm going to stop progress this evening, but I just want to kind of put on the record, as this zoning change is being considered, I have brought this to this table before in recent years, but this St. Dominic Savio piece had been cited to have some workforce housing built on it. And so, I'm not sure, you know, how that transpired in terms of the town acquiring it, instead of the diocese developing that. That's a question. I'm not sure that that's really been answered. So, I know that when a developer builds houses in this town, a certain percentage need to be affordable housing, and so I'm wondering if coming from this, the town could consider that they're taking 13 acres off their rolls, or they, I guess they already have, and so there's not going to be any housing there, and certainly no workforce or affordable housing. So is there some way that the town can make up for that loss, given that the town is well under the mandated amount of affordable housing that we should have? So I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that or not, but...
I'm not aware of any proposal to create workhouse housing on that site. There was interest by a diocese-associated group to put in a senior housing development on that site, but that project never came to fruition. The town did not take the property as a means of stopping any type of housing project from that site. The town saw that property as being surrounded on three sides, with the town road on the fourth side, as a municipal property. We looked at that for acquisition, because we're looking to provide centralization of municipal facilities. The project, that property was purchased because of the infrastructure surrounding it, and because we had a school on one side, a senior center on the other side, and on the third side, we had an access into our playfields. But this had nothing to do with affordable housing at any time from a municipal perspective. Had the diocese proceeded, they wouldn't have sold the property.
I guess that's what I'm kind of wondering. Did the town, I mean, the report that I read, which is from 2007, it sounds more like the town approached the diocese more than vice versa.
Well, certainly, we did approach the diocese, because we had a major investment of the prior purchased area, and we had property on three sides that we already owned. So, we weren't looking at any type of housing, other than the diocese having a nonprofit that was interested in the location of a senior housing facility, and they never brought that through the planning process.
Okay. I'll email the article. I'm just looking at an article from The Independent from 2007, and going back those years, past campaigns by past office holders cited the need to create affordable housing in town, and now it's seven years later, nothing's been done, and I think that the town has kind of been a willing partner in things not being done, and I'm not trying to malign anybody whatsoever, but I think the record kind of speaks for itself. So, I just want to take this opportunity, as you're changing the zone of a property that was going to be developed for housing, affordable housing of one sort or another, and now clearly is not, whether the town can help make up for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, the Town Council is not being requested this evening to change the zoning. You're being asked to change, to amend, the zoning map. The Comprehensive Plan already provides for GI designation for that land area.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on item 7A?
I'll just make a couple of comments here. I'm opposed to the zone designation change, primarily because I'm opposed to the Public Rec Center, and bonding principle and interest and operating costs have been estimated, I think, to be around $800,000 a year for the next 20 years. It's a big expense to our town. I would entertain selling this piece of land to somebody who may build condos and actually present a positive cash flow to the town. So for that reason, I'll oppose the change.
For the record, the voters spoke during the election season, not only this past election, but prior elections, for approval of the Recreation Center, and although it will cost us money, it's for the next generation of people that are going to come before us. And what a better investment than the youth in our community, and this zoning change will enhance probably, you know, other situations that we're going to need up there in terms of parking, or, you know, I just, I'm for it. For the record, I am in approval of it.
Do you have anything to add, Rachel? No?
No.
All right. Well, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing, then.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
That hearing is closed, and...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the proposed zoning map on, from R-40 Medium Density Residential to a GI Government and Institutional for property located at 60A St. Dominic Road, as identified as Assessor's Platte 49-2, Lot 55, consisting of 13.44 acres of vacant land.
Rachel, before you get a second, could I ask that you include in your motion that you adopt, incorporate into your motion, the recommendation of the Planning Board dated May 13, which, and you also incorporate the findings of fact, the findings of consistency with zoning, and the findings that it's consistent with the Comprehensive Plan?
So moved.
For clarification, I just want to make sure that it's designated that this is item 7A in that motion? And I'll second her motion.
All right. So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
By a count of three to one, that zoning is changed, not the zoning. The zoning map is changed. Item 7B is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 10, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, as follows. Article 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 1052, prohibited at any time. No person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle on any of the following streets or portions of streets at any time, except to avoid conflict with other traffic. And it adds, Main Street Parking Lot, Access Drive, from its intersection with Main Street North Side, to a point 175 feet in a general northeasterly direction, to the northeastern boundary of the handicapped access ramp. Towing is authorized. Adding also, Comfort Station Parking Lot, the Access Drive North Side, from its intersection with Main Street, in a general northeasterly direction, for a distance of 142 feet, towing is authorized there as well. South Side, from its intersection with Main Street, in a general northeasterly direction, for a distance of 110 feet, towing is authorized there as well. Ms. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Collins and members of the Town Council, I've provided for you, through the Town Manager, a memorandum outlining what is being proposed upon the recommendation of the Transportation Traffic Review Committee. It relates to the entrances, and exits, actually, of the Town Parking Lot and the so-called Comfort Station Parking Lot. Comfort Station, as you know, is going to be completed fairly soon. Over the course of time, what we have noticed, the Police Department, is that cars are parking in close proximity to the intersection of Main Street, restricting entrance into the parking lot and egress out of the parking lot. It creates a significant public safety issue. So the matter was reviewed by my staff, the Transportation Traffic Review Committee, and what we're proposing and what's before you is restricting parking on the north side as you drive into both parking lots. It's good law. It's going to provide for some public safety, which is needed. You may have seen, as it relates to the Town Parking Lot, we put some barrels in there to restrict the parking. That's not the appropriate way to forever restrict parking. It did the trick, however, some of the barrels were banged and hit. So, what's before you now, if you establish through an amendment to the parking ordinance the no-parking zone, the Police Department can enforce that. So I recommend, as the Police Chief, and also as Chairman of the Transportation Traffic Review Committee, that you support this recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Chief? I think you're right. I've seen dangerous situations there when that's all parked up, so I think this is a good change. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. Are there any comments from the public on item 7B? All right. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on 7B, then.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to approve page four, item B, the amendment to the Town Code, Chapter 10, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, as follows. Article 2, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 1052, prohibited at any time. No person shall stop, stand, or park a vehicle on any of the following streets or portions of streets at any time, except to avoid conflict with other traffic. And it adds, Main Street Parking Lot, Access Drive, from its intersection with Main Street North Side, to a point 175 feet in a general northeasterly direction, to the northeastern boundary of the handicapped access ramp. Towing is authorized. Adding also, Comfort Station Parking Lot, the Access Drive North Side, from its intersection with Main Street, in a general northeasterly direction, for a distance of 142 feet, towing is authorized there as well. South Side, from its intersection with Main Street, in a general northeasterly direction, for a distance of 110 feet, towing is authorized there as well.
Ms. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
President Collins and members of the Town Council, I've provided for you, through the Town Manager, a memorandum outlining what is being proposed upon the recommendation of the Transportation Traffic Review Committee. It relates to the entrances and exits, actually, of the Town Parking Lot and the so-called Comfort Station Parking Lot. Comfort Station, as you know, is going to be completed fairly soon. Over the course of time, what we have noticed, the Police Department, is that cars are parking in close proximity to the intersection of Main Street, restricting entrance into the parking lot and egress out of the parking lot. It creates a significant public safety issue. So the matter was reviewed by my staff, the Transportation Traffic Review Committee, and what we're proposing and what's before you is restricting parking on the north side as you drive into both parking lots. It's good law. It's going to provide for some public safety, which is needed. You may have seen, as it relates to the Town Parking Lot, we put some barrels in there to restrict the parking. That's not the appropriate way to forever restrict parking. It did the trick, however, some of the barrels were banged and hit. So, what's before you now, if you establish through an amendment to the parking ordinance the no-parking zone, the Police Department can enforce that. So I recommend, as the Police Chief, and also as Chairman of the Transportation Traffic Review Committee, that you support this recommendation.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Public hearing 7D is a public hearing relative to adoption of the FY 2015-2016 Position Allocation to Pay Schedule, as shown on Exhibit 1 attached to your agenda. Steve?
The town operates with the general fund and enterprise funds and special revenue funds with a workforce that consists of five different labor groups. One is the non-union employees. The other would be each of the bargaining units with the police department, general municipal employees, public works employees, and EMS employees. Tonight, what you're dealing with is the position classification of pay schedule for those non-organized individuals. The budget was prepared for the 2015-16 year, assuming a 2% general salary increase for all municipal employees, union or non-union. The police are the only ones that have an ongoing contract. They'll be in the third year of a three-year contract during 1516. The other three unions are subject to new contracts as of July 1st. We're anticipating that all of our target numbers for salary increases will be in the area of 2.25 up from the 2% that we used as a placeholder in the development of the 1516 year. In terms of what the implications are, if we were to increase to the 2.25% increase, the wages and salary for non-organized would increase by about $7,300. When we take into consideration other benefit changes that we'll be talking about later on, the overall cost would be about $9,000. We're also anticipating a lower cost on health care than had been predicted at the time that we put the budget together. There, we were forecasting a 5% premium increase, that's coming in at 3%. We're also looking at increasing the requirements for health care contribution for non-unionized employees from 17.5% in the current year to 20% of premium cost in the 201516 year. So I would request that the council consider amendment to the plan as presented in the budget document and have the increase over the existing 201415 year increased by 2.25% rather than 2%. I'm also asking the council to consider one other change. I would ask the council to consider an amendment to the 1516 draft plan from the budget document and change the position of Director of Leisure Services from grade 15 to grade 16, as shown in Exhibit 1 on the agenda this evening. That would take the range for the Director of Leisure Services from $89,938 to $90,642 to a new range, which would be at $89,234 to $97,184. As I've indicated in correspondence to the council, I believe that based on the level of responsibility vested in the position of Director of Leisure Services, that that position should be upgraded to that grade 16 level. Right now, we're operating with about a $3.5 million program, exclusive of capital programming going through that position. Includes operations of the Guild, PCL Office Building, Senior Program, and the Municipal Recreation Program, both year-round and summer programs. So based on the level of responsibility and also, I think, a distinguished performance by the person who holds that position, I'd request council consideration for the amendment, for those two amendments to be considered, once you've deliberated on the merits of the pay plan as presented with those amendments.
Great. Any questions for Town Manager? Are there any comments from the public on item 7D? Well, I think we all wholeheartedly agree with you on the promotion of that grade level. Anybody who's spent significant time in the town knows that our leisure services are one of our outstanding features. So I would...
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
I would like to make a motion to approve Page 4, Item D, for the position allocation and pay schedule that has been shown to us on Exhibit 1. Personally, I know that the Director of Leisure Services does not work Monday through Friday. Works weekends, nights, but that's just here and there. But I do make a motion to approve Item D.
I second.
You're making a recommendation to approve the pay plan with two amendments, the first being the two and a quarter, and the second, the movement of the position from grade 15 to 16?
Yes.
I second.
So moved.
I think the town's very lucky to have Terry in that position.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously as well.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 8 on our agenda tonight, which is Communications. The first three items under Communications, A, B, and C, are resolutions that have been sent to us. I would entertain a motion to bundle them together and place them all on file.
I'd like to make a motion on Page 8 to Communications, to condense items A, B, and C together and place them all on file.
I second.
So moved, all in favor, say aye.
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 And that motion carries unanimously. Item E under Communications is a communication dated June 16, 2015, from Carol Hagan-Mackenty, tendering her resignation from the Town Council due to her election as the state representative in House District 33. It's been received and placed on file, and what do we want to do with it?
I'd like to, I have a letter here from Carol Hagan-Mackenty, tendering her resignation to Dale Holbert, and the town clerk as vice president of the council. I wish to congratulate Carol Hagan-Mackenty on her appointment to represent both South Kingstown and Narragansett as a House Representative for District 33. And I would be very remiss if I didn't say Carol served in a tenure of six and a half years on this council, and she did it with a lot of heart and soul. She's worked so very hard, and we are very fortunate to have had her represent us in this town. So without further ado, I would like to recognize Carol in her accomplishments and, again, congratulate. And when I'm through, I will ask Dale if she would formulate a letter, and that will probably be part of the motion, to congratulate her and to thank her for her years of service here. Dear Dale, as you are aware, on June 9, 2015, I was elected through a special election to the position of State Representative in House District 33. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve the people of South Kingstown as their councilwoman for the past six and a half years. I look forward to serving the residents of South Kingstown and Narragansett as their new state representative in our General Assembly. The time I have spent in South Kingstown on the Town Council has been a very positive and valuable experience for me. I am proud of the work that the Town Council has done over the past several years, and I would like to commend all of the past and present Town Council members that I have served with for a job that's been very well done. I would like to thank Steve and Alfred, our Town Manager, you and the town staff for all of the guidance and assistance you have given me over these years. It is with very mixed emotions that I tender my resignation effective immediately as a South Kingstown Town Council member. I am being sworn in today as the state representative for House District 33 at 4:00 PM. I look forward with great excitement to my new journey ahead. Thank you for your attention in this regard. Very truly yours, Carol Hagan-Mackenty. Thank you, Carol.
Yes, thanks, girl.
Wish her luck.
So we need a motion to accept the resignation and...
I make a motion that we accept the resignation from Carol Hagan-Mackenty and wish her continued success in her new endeavor.
I second that.
So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. Item F under Communications, communications dated June 17, 2015, from Meg Kerr, Rhode Island Director of Clean Water Action, Clean Water Fund, and from Peter Galvin, Conservation Chair, Sierra Club Rhode Island Chapter, expressing concerns with the potential environmental impact on Potter Pond of a proposed development by the point at East Mattoonik. It's been received, placed on file, and what do we want to do with it?
We talked about this in the work session. This is Item F, and we had agreed that we would forward this to our zoning board so that they can investigate and look into this a little bit more thoroughly so that when and if a decision needs to be made, we will be more educated to make a decision on this.
Do I hear that motion?
Is that a motion?
I'm, what's that?
All right, I'm second that.
So moved. All in favor of sending this to the zoning board, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously as well. And that brings us to item 9 on our agenda tonight, which is comments from interested citizens. This is the public's opportunity to come and tell us what they want us to be doing or what they're feeling themselves. So please just come up to the podium, say your name for the record and where you live, and we'll listen.
Good evening, President Collins, members of the council. My name is Timothy Goodwin. I'm a paramedic for the South Kingstown Emergency Medical Services, IAF Local 3365. The reason I'm coming to you tonight is to explain a little bit of the Muscular Disturby Association and the Fill the Boot campaign that we'll be doing throughout the community now upcoming, throughout the summer, basically. Most people are aware of the Fill the Boot campaign. You've seen firefighters, paramedics, EMTs at red lights, things like that, campaigning for funds for the Fill the Boot campaign. I was fortunate enough to go to Connecticut last month to talk about this a little bit and see firsthand where our funds go and meet several members of our community that are stricken with this horrible disease. So after speaking with the members of the community, this became much more personal for the members of the Emergency Medical Services. As far as where South Kingstown EMS is concerned, we raised $2,400 last year with our Fill the Boot campaign. We're a very small department, we only have 16 members, five of which are on duty at any one time. So $2,400 was pretty good for us. Just to give you an idea, that's the same as Attleboro, Brockton, Hartford, Connecticut. So we did pretty good. The reason that I'm here before the council tonight is, as the leaders of our community, I wanted to give you the opportunity, before we go out and hit the streets, if you so feel inclined, to be the first members of South Kingstown to be able to donate to our campaign this year. It just so happens that I have a boot right here. So if anyone, if it would be appropriate, I'd...
Don't forget those people sitting at that table.
Hold on, I gotta get my money.
I'm ready. From the official firsts, I love it.
Oh, I just, I know. His vibe, thank you.
You have change.
I have a question for you. Do you have a goal for, do you make goals for this, or is it however?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We raised $2,400 last year. I doubled our goal this year to $5,000. And also, we have a couple other fundraisers going on. I'll be running the Chicago Marathon in October, raising, I've committed $2,000 to that in addition.
And what is the date that you're going to be doing this?
October 17. Our Fill the Boot will be this Saturday at East Mattoonik, at the entrance of East Mattoonik. That'll be our first campaign, weather-dependent, and we'll be out there, hopefully in force. The reason we do it at the entrance to East Mattoonik, and we also do one later in the summer at Belmont Marketplace, just because they're safe locations, whereas other places, you may see them out in traffic. East Mattoonik has that nice barrier where we can be up on the grass and in front of the gates. There's no one traveling through at a high rate of speed, and at Belmont, we're on the sidewalk away from any traffic. So the 27th, this coming Saturday, we will be at East Mattoonik, and anyone else that feels so inclined to donate, they can absolutely see me at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you having me speak.
Good luck reaching your goal.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your work for the community as well. Please?
My name is Martha Stamp, and I just have a question on this resolution from Charlestown and Exeter. I can't hear too well, so I don't know, what are you all, just going to table this? Let, let me, okay.
We've already done that, yes.
Yeah, you already did. But as a farm family member, you know farming is getting almost, you know, if that's all the family has done for generations and generations, it's getting very, very difficult. I mean, you have to see it to believe it. And I know it's, it's something that we hate to see, but you have everything rising, and the farmer just can't recoup the money that is needed to run the farm. Now, you all know who I am, and my brother and my nephew are having a very difficult time. And, you know, it's unintended consequences that are hitting everyone. Now, I was just interested in this, but I do have a couple of other issues further down, or can I talk now? I don't, you've asked for public opinion, I'll do whatever you want, but you've got to talk a little louder for old people, you know?
You can speak to those issues now?
I can?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. I have a question regarding the children in the schools. In 2000, there were 4,400 students, and in 2014, there were 3,200, a drop of 1,200 students. But the costs don't seem to go down. Now, I don't know the number of the charter schools. I'm all for charter schools because people will have a choice of where to send their children, and things are just not going perfect in the public schools. You know it, you know it, and I know it. I see it every day. At 78, I'm still working, and when the girls come and say, "Well, I never counted money like that." And, you know, it makes me feel good because they're looking up at an ulster, and they're learning it's too bad that our schools are not teaching properly. And to go have homeschoolers, they're doing wonderful. And that brings me to another point. My great nieces and nephews have all been homeschooled, and they are all college-educated. Not all of them yet, because there's eight of them. They are all out of state. Where are you going to get all the money from to pay for all of this? Affordable this, subsidize this, welfare this? If they're working, I have no problem with affordable housing. Now, in my possession, I have the budget from 2015 in... Now, in my possession, I have the budget from 2015 in Rhode Island. But what concerns me most is this rap sheet. And in it, it says the... And you can look it up under my timeline because it's all over there. The Executive Office of Commerce has definitely too much control. Here's the chart. Secretary, Central Management. Then it goes to Housing and Community Development. Office of Housing and Community Development. Housing Resources Commission. I am so fearful that this is just renamed from Roadmap Rhode Island. Because I'll tell you what, there's a few people up there, and some of them are Democrats, and all of the Republicans, of course. I do trust they're trying their best to knock some smarts in the people that are voting for the very people that have screwed them out of their pensions. And you know, Steve, you better look at it because you get to. And I'm certain that by the time you want to retire, some of that money isn't going to be there for you. Now, some of the other things under the Secretary, the Executive Office of Commerce, Rhode Island Television and Film Office, Quasi Public Appropriations, Rhode Island Commerce Corporation, I-95 Redevelopment District Commission, Department of Business Regulation. Too much is under the control of Stefan Brier. I hope that you all understand what I'm getting at. And the last issue is the economic development down here that we have now in place. Rental property. In order for some of these rental agents, the real estate agents down here... I have a very good friend who is scared to death because they look at a big figure and they say, "Oh, well, you get a good amount." No, you have to factor in all of the costs that it takes. And now, this department is going to get 7% of that 8% rental. I hope you understand what I'm talking about. Because in the budget, they need some more money. No, stop spending. It's that simple. You can't keep taking money away from us. We are struggling out here. So you have all along the coast, all along the coast up to North Kingston. And don't forget, there's other people in Providence that rent, too. And to force this on us... I'm telling you all this because you must, you must get through to your people because we're going to lose a lot of money down here in Charlestown, Westerly, and Narragansett and South Kingston. If these little old ladies build up $1,200 to rent or $2,000 to rent a little cottage for one week, they save all year for that, and then they have to pay 8%. It all amounts to 13%, but 8 with the hotel and all... And guess what, group? We are going to get 1% back. That is terrible. You all understand... I want you to understand it, and I want the public to understand it, too, because you may be impacted. It's awful, and I'm getting all sorts... And I'm not even in... I'm not even up at the State House, but they're all calling me because I know I've got a big mouth. Okay, well, thank you. It's always wonderful to be here, and I'm so interested, no matter who's sitting up there, when I come in, I'm so interested to see the looks on everybody's face.
Thank you, Martha.
Good job, Martha.
Thank you.
Are there other comments from the public?
Jim O'Neill, Mattoonik. Martha's always a tough act to follow. I was up here for 14 years, and she hasn't lost a step, so it's really great. A couple of things. I'll run them consecutively here. Meg, what a wonderful compliment for Carol Hagan-McIntee. She was a great councilwoman. I battled with her and others many, many times, but she was probably the most reasonable person that I've ever worked with in government. What's great about Carol's election is that, for the first time, and I've been involved in this town from planning zoning meetings in the middle of 90s, 14 years on the council, I can promise you, this is the first time that we will finally have a representative that will represent South Kingston as well as Narragansett. We have not for 25 years. Across the board, I won't bring up all the particulars, but finally, we'll have someone that we can call and someone that will answer and respond to us immediately. But she'll make a great representative. Now, the reason I'm here tonight, and what I'd like to do is pass these things out first. Don't want to take up too much time. And these involve... You just got a couple of communication items. They involve Wacomo Park, which is now on the south portion, now called The Point at East Mattoonik, and the north portion, now called The Village at Potter Pond. So I'd just like to pass out these for four and for Dale, some information I have that I'm going to refer to.
Thank you.
Well, as I said, I live in Mattoonik. I believe we have a pending ecological environment tragedy about to take place in what I refer to as the fishing village of Snug Harbor, East Mattoonik. That will forever change, forever change the general character of the neighborhood. That's always supposed to be a finding of fact by a zoning board. Will their decision change the general character of the neighborhood? You're going to go from $7,000 to $8,000 rentals, middle-class, affordable six-month rentals in summer, now to million-dollar properties. And as a mobile home laws work in Rhode Island, these folks were given their marching orders, as you know, early this year. The council needs to find a way to cease... Ask for a cease and desist order or an action of some kind to stop this intensification, this demolition and expansion of this former mobile home park. We need to step into the fray because the town of South Kingston has left the abutters, the neighbors, and the environment at risk. And I'll explain that in a minute. There's so much confusion in the zoning ordinance about this property. Do we have a legal non-conforming use? Is it no longer the same use? What about dimension? What about density? And this whole issue started back in 2007, 2008, and you'll see the name Barker on that front cover. And the zoning board at that time, Mr. Barker asked for... What he was allowed, according to Article 201, which I also gave you a copy of in there. Mr. Barker asked for a 50% increase of his square footage. You see that old little house there, 220 square feet? He was allowed to go to 330. The zoning board approved that. No one seemed to have a complaint. Then all of a sudden, the fall came along. There are no neighbors. No one knows what's going on. All of a sudden, Mr. Barker came back and asked for 720 square feet. No questions. We can't find the tapes or the discussion on it, but it was approved. Well, being the debtor winner, 2008, no neighbors. Remember, the only neighbors down there are DEM and the other mobile home park. They're all home. All of a sudden, we have a 35-foot-high building. We have a 1,080-square-foot home with a half a second floor added to the first floor. That's a 500% increase from 220 square feet when Article 201 says 50%. And if you want something more frightening, let's look at cubic feet. Because mass and scale has got to become part of our zoning and planning process. If he had had 330 square feet with a 10-foot-high building, you've got 3,300 cubic feet. 30 feet, 35-foot-high, 720 square foot of... Just do the math. You come out to approximately 25,000 cubic feet. 800%. Mass and scale is overwhelming. And that's why we need the council's help down here. Because you'll see the photos in there. There are going to be 16 more of that one photo you see in the middle of that large home. 16 more of these, which will forever change the environment. And I would hope you would all understand that. There's a question, too. All right, so how's the town council to blame? You know, Phase II zoning in 1999 brought up that 50% rule, if you will. And by the way, it's up to 50% in a fragile area. Frankly, you wouldn't give anyone more than 0% in a fragile environmental area. In 2010, the town council passed unanimously a shoreline forum, unanimously, pleading with our reps, our senators, coastal, everybody, Army Corps. Let's get it together. We're living on the edge here. We are living on the edge. We sent the resolutions to all the proper parties. They could care less about meeting with us. And what happened? Year later, Irene. Year later, Sandy. And then Superstorm Nemo. Incredible, you know? We were just waiting, and the cliff, and it all came. So after Sandy, the zoning board heard an argument from... Not an argument, but Roy Carpenter's asked for a blanket special-use permit to move 28 cottages to the back rows from Row A and B. Some were demolished in the storm. Some were in harm's way. Some were obviously going to be threatened. And the zoning board approved that move of 28 homes, either to be rebuilt or moved the entire home. Not one inch more of living square footage. It was apples to apples, as Mrs. Latendry said, who worked for Micro Solo at the time. Then, in 2013, April and May, town council... Meg Healy was on this. We passed unanimously. We saw what happened at Roy Carpenter's. We saw what happened with the storms. We see what's happening with our coastline. We had councils that understood climate change, rising seas, and ecological food chain that this pond and marsh represent. We saw all this. And we gave a resolution to the planning department. We need these five seasonal summer waterfront southern-South Kingston properties. We need a common denominator. What's going to happen in storms? Who has got the most fragile environmental situation? On and on and on. That was what we asked two years and two months ago, planning department. What happened? We have another hurricane. Not the one that comes in from the south, but a very wealthy developer who came in and bought the southern part of Wacomo Park. And now, some of us are at the zoning board, being beaten up, trashed. You all need to have your feet on the ground, boots on the ground, as they say in the military. You need to come to these zoning board hearings and see the suits and these slick folks. Snake oil salesmen, some of them. You ought to see what just we butters, the neighbors, folks that used to rent there at a fair price. You ought to see what we go through. It is not fun. No wonder nobody comes up to this microphone. This is dangerous territory when you show up, especially in zoning and planning. And believe me, there are so many millions of dollars at stake here. These guys are out to eat our lunch. Yours, the zoning board, and the planning department. And that's what's happening. So that's been the history of this. And so we really need the town here to come together. You know, I keep reading the land use policy and the comprehensive plan. Says in this area, "A continuance, yes, as a summer resort setting while attempting to maintain the overall character and scale." The letters of the communication just received a few minutes ago from Sierra Club, Clean Water. Those letters were turned into the zoning board, along with letters from Audubon, the Rivers Council, Salt Ponds Coalition, even Mr. Collins. All those letters were in there. This is one frightening, dangerous situation. And dangerous because of the south shore, all of South County, all the way to Westerly, the Succotash Title Flats and Marsh. These are rarity. This is part of our food chain. This is part of our tourism. This is part of our economic life. From an oyster bar to the ice cream across the street, East Mattoonik Beach, people in bathing suits, it's a little hockey talk. It's a fishing village, all the way to Snug Harbor. That's what we are. Yes, we have million-dollar homes. We also have $100,000 homes. And we have really affordable opportunities for the middle and low class to enjoy a summer of six months at the beach. And now, a major part of that's gone. I think what happens here is that the town has made the mistake. And I can't blame the town totally. We asked that the planning board hop on this. We asked the state reps, coastal, Army Corps, everybody, to hop on this. We'll just wait a few more years, a few more days, a few more months. And now our coastline is really in jeopardy. And I don't think you have to be a scientist to understand that. So the problem is, as a neighbor, as a butter, we were really broadsided here. The fact that this 50% rule, which no one can figure out, and it's for an area that should be in a fragile environmental area, so the zoning board should be looking at a 0% increase. And then the fact that the planning board now is now looking at this issue for the other four seasonal parks, but the camel's nose is under the tent. The mule's out of the barn, as Bob Dylan said. So I'm a concerned citizen, and you have a lot of people down there really upset. And you need to get boots on the ground. No more letters, no more nothing. You need to go tie yourself to bulldozers and trees and protect this environment and protect the neighbors down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public?
I'll be quick. Just on the housing, you know, people... You hear affordable housing is still a knee-jerk reaction to that. And the reality is, is that studies and statistics show that the majority of people who are low and moderate income work. And then there's a whole other segment who are either disabled or retired. And the town actually has done a pretty good job with elderly housing. People working... I don't like to use the word "poor" necessarily, but it is true. And I think sometimes people who are poor, they may not feel poor in spirit. They may know they don't have a lot of money, and they don't mind saying that. And but just because people are poor doesn't mean that they don't work. And so I think we do have... If we do have a housing crisis in this town, it's in that people are leaving who do work and just cannot afford to live here. And so I think we're kind of at a point where it needs to be addressed. All right, so just looking, that's item one. Item two, I'm just looking that you're going to ask the Board of Elections to set a date or process and such. And so, you know, for town council seat. And so I'm just hoping that voters of South Kingston will look forward. I hope that they don't look back. I strongly believe we need more representation outside of the local party establishment. I'm a member on the school committee, as I think people know. And just having a more diverse representation here, we have a lot of joint meetings. Having the diverse representation has helped round out the conversation. It's helped us to look at things differently. And I think it's being not affiliated with the local party. And so hopefully, that seat will go to somebody new and who's somebody who's unaffiliated with the local party. And then my hope is, because I'm the only unaffiliated person on school committee, that come November 2016, the success here will roll over and help me even more in the school meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public at this time? Any comments from the council? I would say to just address a couple points. You know, we had a work session where we looked at the goals that the council wants to work towards. We're in the... at the goals that the council wants to work towards, we're in the process of updating that document. I'm sure we'll have another work session on it. Affordable housing is certainly one of the topics we're looking at. We're going to be meeting with the planning board and the Conservation Commission. I think we'll take up the issue of these sort of seaside villages, which is work that the planning department has begun, and I look forward to hearing about. So government never moves fast enough, of course, but I do believe that we're working on those issues. And with that, I think we'll go to the town manager's report.
I've issued to the council a memo dated June 11th indicating that we've got final certification on the property tax levy program for the 15-16 year. The property tax rate will be set at $15.52. This reflects a four-cent increase over the current year rate. We'll be looking at raising the levy by 1.3% or about $900,000. We're also looking at the fact that we've seen property, taxable property growth of about 1% over the past year, up from about 0.7% in the prior year. So we are seeing some good movement within the market and development within the community. For the average home in South Kingstown, we're looking at a tax rate increase of approximately $12 to $13. Once you add the motor vehicle in, it'll be a bit more than that, but we're still probably under the $15 mark for average-sized family units in the community. Second item I wanted to mention is that on this coming Saturday, June 27th, between the hours of 8:00 and 1:00 here at Town Hall, there will be a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. This is run by the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corp. with their Eco Depot. They are asking for people to set up appointments to come, to get rid of those common materials. Their number is 401-942-1430 at extension 241. And again, that will be between the hours of 8:00 in the morning and 1:00 in the afternoon. We'll have town staff there as well to assist the state in keeping those lines moving because we expect it to be a well-attended event. But certainly, people can take the time to do some cleaning and get rid of those hazardous materials around the household. Third item I wanted to mention is that for the community, we've received notice that Bridgetown Road will be closed tonight, tomorrow night and Wednesday night between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM for road reconstruction. Certainly, this is good news, not that the road's being closed, but good news that it's finally being repaired. Hopefully, some of those improvements will provide better access into Narragansett and relieve some of the traffic congestion that we're seeing on Route 1 past the tower. Those are the items that I needed to report on this evening. Be glad to answer any questions council has on either of the two previous reports that have been issued since the last council meeting. If there's no questions, I'd yield the floor to the solicitor.
Well, I'd just like to say congratulations on the budget, and I mean, at the four-cent mark, it's testament to your work, Steve. And in regard to the, to that hazardous waste disposal, I made use of that when I was over in Charlestown recently. Even if you don't get a chance to call, I would recommend showing up, they will take your stuff. Old gas, old paint that's lying around, I'm sure you got it, so get rid of it. Solicitor report?
Unless there are questions, we're all set here. Second.
All right, that brings us to item 12 on our agenda, appointments. We do get to make an appointment tonight.
I'll make a resolution to appoint William Rosen to the Route 138 Reconstruction Project Area Committee for a term to expire May of 2017.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Item 13 is New Business, and 13C is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Baker &amp; Taylor for the purchase of books to the South Kingstown Public Library in an amount not to exceed $76,000 and is further described in a memorandum from the library director to the town manager dated June 15, 2015, entitled Bid Recommendation Books, South Kingstown Public Library.
Recommendation is to stay with Baker &amp; Taylor, who is the vendor of record that we've used for several years, based on the price detail as presented in Ms. Long's memorandum.
Questions on this? Go ahead, your motion.
I make a motion that we approve item C, the resolution for the purchase of books from West Tybola Road in Charlotte, North Carolina to Baker &amp; Taylor. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item D, under New Business, is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to CAM HVAC and Construction, Inc., 116 Lydia Ann Road, Smithfield, Rhode Island, for HVAC maintenance services at the Public Safety Complex and Animal Shelter. It's in accordance with the terms and conditions of the bid specifications at the following time and material rates, and I'm not going to read those, and is further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated June 15, 2015.
Recommend as presented.
Any questions?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 13D as presented.
Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously.
Item F, under New Business, is a resolution requesting the State Board of Elections to establish a special election calendar for the specific purpose of electing one town council member as a result of Councilwoman McInty's election to the General Assembly and subsequent resignation from the town council, as further described in a memorandum from the town clerk to the town manager dated June 16, 2015, entitled Town Council's Special Election.
I second, I know we talked about this in the work session, we had come up with a couple of dates, I don't know if that should be included in.
So moved.
Okay.
I think those dates are preliminary, do we want to?
Yes, we've had preliminary discussions with the State Board of Elections, and the preliminary dates would be if a primary was warranted, if that would take place on August 18th, and the election will take place on September 22nd. And those election dates would provide for declarations on July 9th and July 10th.
Thank you, Jill. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any further comments? All right, all in favor of item F, say aye.
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 And that motion carries unanimously. Item G is a resolution authorizing an extension of an award of contract granted May 28, 2013 to the red uniformed Taylor for custom police uniforms in accordance with original bidding specifications and the terms and unit prices, as modified in the proposal dated May 22, 2015.
As noted in the chief's memo, there's been a negotiation to keep the current contractor of record with new fees for the 15-16 year. Recommend approval as presented.
I make the motion to approve item number 13G.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Item H is a resolution authorizing awards of bid for miscellaneous road-building materials to the following bidders at the unit prices, and is further described in a memorandum from the public services director to the town manager dated June 10, 2015, entitled Bid Recommendation Road Building Materials.
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13H as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Item I is a resolution establishing a septic discharge rate of $70 per 1,000 gallons effective July 1, 2015, and amending the town's schedule of fees, as further described in a memo from the public services director to the town manager.
As presented in the budget document, $2 increase from $68 to $70 will process about 4.3 million gallons and generate about $300,000 in income. Moving on with item J, what we're looking at is the increase to, on fees, from $229 to the $240, which is a 4.8% increase. We're also looking at the excess charge over 10,000 cubic feet of water process at $3.05 for the 14-15 year and $3.25 for the 15-16 year. I'd ask the council to consider those together.
I make a motion to approve item number 13I and J.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries unanimously as well, and brings us to item K on the agenda. Resolution adopting all enterprise and special revenue funds as presented in the 2015-2016 Final Town Council Budget, approved April 27, 2015, in accordance with the South Kingstown Town Code, Chapter 6, Finance, Article 1.
Items K and L are directly related to the budget that the council adopted for the 2015-16 year. Item K establishes the, or provides direction to the finance director for proper administration on the six enterprise and special revenue funds. Item L is a listing of the chart of accounts that needs to be adopted by the council, which establishes the major program functional areas and funding levels. I'd request council approval on both items K and L.
I make a motion that we approve item 13K and L as presented. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And that motion carries unanimously, and brings us to item N, which is a resolution amending an award of bid previously granted on December 10th and amended on July 28 to safety marking of Bridgeport, Connecticut for municipal road striping services.
The recommendation is for award to the lowest qualified presenter, which is Audet in the amount of not to exceed $92,000.
Recommend.
Recommend award as presented.
I make a motion that we approve item 13N as presented. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And that motion carries unanimously. Item Q is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to EW Audet &amp; Sons, 169 Bay Street, Providence, for installation of an emergency generator at South Kingstown Senior Center.
I thought we had dealt with that one.
Did we do?
Recommendation is to award as presented.
I motion to accept item number 13Q as recommended.
Second.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries unanimously. Rachel, I think your microphone might be off.
You can't hear me, huh? There it is.
We went this whole meeting. Item R, resolution to appoint Peter Rogiro, Esquire's Special Legal Counsel to represent the Zoning Board of Review, sitting as the Planning Board of Appeals, in connection with an appeal of the Planning Board's decision regarding the Hampton Place application.
We discussed this in the work session, and I make a motion that we approve item 13R. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously as well. Item S, a resolution authorizing modifications to employee benefits provided to non-union personnel, including the basic wage and salary program and longevity benefits effective July 1, 2015.
I've provided the council with a memorandum relative to salary and benefit adjustments on non-organized town personnel. You've previously addressed the 2.25 increase in the pay schedule. There'll also be a 5-cent increase in the value of longevity. It'll go from $117 per year of service, which is $2.25 a week, to $119.60 or $2.30 a week. We will also be directing that non-organized employees will be required to pay 20% of health care premium in the 2015-16 year. We'll also be adjusting the benefit associated with dental from a cap of $1,200 in service level to $2,000. The overall cost of that, system-wide inclusive of the four unions, will be about $800 in terms of projected costs.
Great.
As I had mentioned, there was, there may be a change, one additional change, but that'll come forward at the time that we complete negotiation with the three of the four unions that we have, relative to post-employment costs as far as health care and retirement, but we're not prepared to address that this evening. I'd ask the council to approve the resolution as presented on tonight's agenda.
I make a motion to approve item 13S as presented. Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that motion carries unanimously as well. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.